All right, well that being said, good evening ladies and gentlemen. We're about to get underway. I want to thank, I want to take the time to thank you all for taking the time yourselves tonight to attend and participate in the local democratic process. It's fantastic to see so many people willing to learn more about our candidates for elected office. I also want to take a quick opportunity to thank this evening's sponsors, the Fergus Falls Daily Journal and Peg Access Television. Both organizations have committed their time, staff, and resources to help make this possible. And finally, I want to thank ISD 544 and the Kennedy Secondary School staff for affording us an ideal venue for tonight's program. With all that having been said, let's meet your candidates for Fergus Falls City Council Awards One and Two in 2018, and candidates, I'd ask that you please stand as you're introduced so the audience can get to know you. From left to right, they are Ward One Candidate and Incumbent Darren Appert. A round of applause for Mr. Appert, please. Ward Two Candidate and Incumbent Scott Rachels. Ward Two Candidate Scott Kwame. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge Ward One Candidate Krista Hagberg, who was unable to attend this evening. We do wish her the best in her ongoing campaign. In a moment, we will allow each of the candidates to provide a personal introduction to themselves and their campaigns, but first, a brief introduction to the rules and etiquette for the debate. As the conversation begins, each candidate will be given three minutes to introduce themselves. Then, questions in the debate proper will be underway. My name is RC Drews, and it will be my privilege to serve as moderator throughout the proceedings. To the audience members, I would ask that you refrain from applause, cheering, or any other show of preference outside of the candidate introductions and the event's conclusion. We want to ensure that we can include as many questions as possible into the one hour that we've allotted this evening, and we also want to ensure a respectful atmosphere for all of the candidates. To our candidates and the audience, a reminder of the process tonight. During the question phase of the debate, responses will be limited to two minutes per speaker. At the one-minute mark, our official in the front row will hold up a yellow card to indicate that there are fewer than 60 seconds remaining. When the stopwatch reaches just 10 seconds left, he will hold up a red card. Should a candidate exceed the maximum time limit, it will be my responsibility to interrupt at that time out of fairness to the other candidates. Candidates, in the event that you wish to make a rebuttal following another speaker's statement, I ask that you simply raise your hand and gain eye contact with myself. If the divergence seems appropriate, I will, as soon as the speaking candidate concludes, permit the rebuttal and allow 30 seconds for a counterstatement. Please know that the questions tonight have been written by myself and are known to myself only in the interest of fairness. Furthermore, questions asked during our first debate will not be repeated during the Ward Three and Four debate to follow, again, to ensure that no candidate has an unfair advantage through preparation and rehearsal. Some of our questions came from public submissions, and we thank those of you who took the time to submit a question. Finally, I would remind our candidates and myself to speak loudly and enunciate clearly. The microphones in front of you will only pick up your responses if they are facing you directly, so please ensure your microphones are facing accordingly for the sake of the audience and for those watching via Peg Access Television's broadcast. Without further ado, we will now hear an introduction from each of the candidates, beginning again from left to right. Mr. Appert, you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drews. I'm originally from Hazelton, North Dakota, growing up on a small grains farm where I learned hard work and helping others from my parents. I'm still fortunate to still have both of them around, and they've been a big influence on my life. I'm married to my wife Cindy for the last 28 years. She works here at Kennedy High School as a business ed teacher and runs, with the help of her students, the school store. I have three daughters, Kelsey McGowan, Rachel Larson, and Cameron; two sons-in-law, Joe and Josh; two grandchildren, Matthias and Hallie Grace, along with a dog, Ruby, and a cat, Cleo. I've been in the insurance business for 33 years. I'm a city of Fergus Falls resident for the past six years. I'm 14 years as a Fergus Falls area resident, and I've been working in town here for the past 20 years. I'm a member of OALB Church. I've been a former member of that school board, past member of the Fergus Falls Gymnastics Academy. I'm a Fergus Falls small-business owner, Appert Insurance Services, with an office on Lincoln Avenue Downtown here in Fergus Falls. So what does it take to be on the city council? Availability, and I'll talk a little bit about that and the demands of that, work ethic, and the ability to work together to achieve goals. There are many moving parts to all this, and the landscape is constantly changing and evolving. So far, I'm at 196 weeks into my first term, 1,372 days, approximately 588 meetings, 2,744 texts and calls, 1,520 miles, including trips to St. Paul, local project visits, other site visits, and walking or biking city trails. My committee assignments are: I'm a member of the Labor Management Committee, member of the Tax Levy Committee, Ward One Board of Equalization Representative, West Central Initiative Board Liaison for the city council. So with those several trips to St. Paul and working on things such as the LCC Mar with Mr. Speedall for Trails by the River, talking with SHIP-O regarding historic preservation pieces, RTC bonding, and speaking with Bud Norris on those issues, you can see how the miles add up. Having successes in those trips, ultimately, we have recently set out to outline three objectives or priorities of which I have supported and been instrumental in some of the aspects of their coming to fruition, including the infrastructure needs, community development, and economic development. How much time is left there? Okay. 20 percent increase in our street improvement fund with the infrastructure needs, community development, downtown riverfront plan, dairy site acquisition, RTC development, and bicycling, aquatic center, and housing improvements. Economic development is our number-one objective. I have support of the city, along with the Downtown Riverfront Council and the Greatest Fergus Falls Corp. to help us with this combined effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appert. Mr. Rachels?
My name's Scott Rachels, and I won't let, Derek can use some of my time if he wants it, because I'll be quick. I've lived in Fergus Falls all my life. I went to school in this building. I graduated here. I am married. I have a beautiful wife named Cindy and a daughter, Megan, who just got married to Sam, Megan and Sam Iverson, and I have a grandson, Landon. I've worked here, various jobs, for like two jobs, I think, I've been in my life. But in 2002, I was given the opportunity to open my own business, and I've been in the business of Scott's Machine Shop since then, so that's what, 16 years? I feel that our community is a great community to live in. I raised my family here. I raised, they're going to raise their family here, my daughter is, and I just believe that I need to give back to the community that they gave to me from my business. On the council, I'm not going to go through what Darren went about, all the time he went through, because I've been on it for eight years, and I don't want to know how much time it's been. But we spend a lot of time, the whole council does a great job of inputs, and that's part of our job, was we need to, just the meetings are just part of it. I'm on the liaison to the golf course. I've been on the Port Authority President. I'm on the current Port Authority right now, and I just look forward to serving the people of Fergus Falls for the next four years, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rachels. Mr. Kwame, you have the floor.
Thank you, RC. Thank you for those of you who've come to visit and hear from us today. Thank you for coming and making time in your schedules today, and for those of you who are watching as well. My name is Scott Kwame. My wife's name is Becky, and we have a daughter, Christina, who just graduated from college and is looking toward moving into the nursing field. And I've lived here in Fergus for over 30 years, and I chose to live here after having opportunities to live in several other places. I've lived in Colorado, California, Montana, North Dakota, and many places before landing here in the 80s, and I find this to be the best place to be. I'm really glad that I'm here. I'm glad that our family is here. We were able to raise our daughter here. She's grown up and known nothing but life in Fergus Falls her entire life now. And I think it's a great place to live, and I love to tell people that they should be here too, because it's just a great place to be. And yet, it's got places and there's parts of things that could be better, and so I guess that's what brought me into this race, thinking that I've got something to offer, that I think that I can help to make things better. And with that in mind, threw my hat in the ring and hope to earn your vote as we look forward to the election now in November. I work for Indigo Sign Works. Indigo is a company that builds signs of all kinds. It's based in Fargo, and I'm connected to the office in Alexandria. I work from my home office, and that gives me a great deal of flexibility to be involved in activities, whether it's community activities like this, church activities, volunteering in various ways, and I appreciate the kind of flexibility that I have and how it works to, you know, live the life I like to live and have that kind of freedom. It works out pretty nicely. Our family is members of Bethel Lutheran Church. I've been there forever, since we've been here. I'm involved in lots of different things over there, technical things, running the programs and stuff, as well as on the facility team, most people would call it the trustee board. As far as the future of Fergus Falls, where I see the real important focus that we need to have going forward is on economic development. Our population is pretty stable. It's a safe place and a great place to live, but we've really got to focus on economic development, and that's where I see myself being most interested in seeing that happen. There's a lot of issues, whether it's the pool or daycare or the Kirkbride or the riverfront, but if we can focus on how these things will bring economic development to our city, I think that's going to be good for us all. And again, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Thank you, candidates. We'll now begin the debate proper. As a reminder, our candidates will each be allowed two minutes to respond to the question asked. The order of questioning will rotate one candidate to the right after each question in the interest of fairness. Again, we ask that the audience withhold, applause during this part of the debate, and please silence your phones and electronic devices. For our first question, a tough one, and we look to you, Mr. Appert. The role of city council member is one that has come under increasing public scrutiny amidst major economic changes in Fergus Falls. What, in your personal experience, has prepared you to handle the level of review and criticism inherent in this position? And for our incumbents tonight, I would ask that you speak outside of your time on council.
Well, it probably goes back to the farm. Something breaks down, you fix it, you know? Try to wait till next year or three years down the road. You get in there and get at it. We've had some challenges. None of us are economic developers. We don't hold that title. We're here to facilitate anybody coming to town or looking to come to town to make sure that there's not anything in their way to develop their business or their storefront or whatever they're looking to do here. We're not into economic development. There are other people with those titles in town or with those organizations that are most recently the Greater Fergus Falls Corp. that are set up to do that kind of stuff. We're just going to be the, hopefully, the people that can facilitate, make that step a little bit easier for some of these other organizations, these businesses that want to come to town. You know, there's city ordinances, there's rules, regulations. We want to try to improve those, so that makes it easier for those people that want to come to town.
Thank you, Mr. Appert. Mr. Rachels, you have two minutes.
I think the best thing for me is, as a businessman, you have the good times, you have the bad times, and right now, with the closing of a few stores in town, Kmart and Sunmart and Target is a huge impact to our community, but it's just, it's a down, it's a down, I won't call it a, we're going, we're going to close up in a month or a year or five years. It's just, it's a slow time. We're going to come through this. Everybody comes, I come through slow times with my business, and so, Fergus Falls. We're not, the city council is not an economic development. We have people that we put in place for that, and in our budgets, we can do that. We have to concentrate on service, and service is a huge thing for our citizens. That's what we're here for. And I believe that the future of Fergus Falls is great. We have a lot of good, Forward Fergus Falls, working on it. The other Fergus Falls committees are working together, and I think we've got a good future ahead of us, and good people behind those that are into that, that know the economic development. And I just believe that there's a good future in Fergus Falls right now, and I just want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rachels. Mr. Kwame, your response?
When it comes to having to deal with negative situations and people that might criticize you, I've had a pretty good preparation for that, I feel. My life has been mostly, my working life has been mostly sales and management. I've hired hundreds of people. I've interviewed just as many. I've fired people. As a salesman, I've literally had my samples thrown out the window, and I've had people slam doors in front of my face. I've had people accept what I've proposed and give me checks for thousands of dollars, and I've had people tell me to get lost. And I know how to deal with those situations in person and on the phone and by email, and when it comes to just dealing with those situations, whether it's personal scrutiny and people that might criticize me directly or criticize the company I work for, the business that I'm in, the organization that I'm representing, keeping a calm demeanor and keeping a positive outlook, I think is important, and my dad was a good example for me to follow him that way, and I give him credit for showing how you maintain a good outlook on your life and always look for the good in things. And so, I believe I've been very well-prepared for what may come in this job.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame, and thank you, candidates. In the midst of economic changes, one common argument seems to be the need for recreational opportunities to spur growth or improving base infrastructure to sustain what the city already has. Which approach, if either, do you believe best supports a healthy future for Fergus Falls? Mr. Rachels, you'll be first.
Infrastructure is a huge thing in our city, and with us right now trying to get our roads in better shape, I mean, that's a huge thing you hear about, probably weekly is how bad our roads are, and we've worked very hard in the last years trying to get that back into the realm of getting up to where we need to be, and there's, I think right now, we're, I don't know how many millions of dollars behind because of, the roads have deteriorated and we haven't, you know, we can only spend so much money, and that means taxpayer money, so we have to be careful on that. Bringing things like a water park to Fergus Falls is a great idea. I think it's a good idea, and I think it belongs in the people's hands to decide if that's going to be the case, if it's going to be, they should be voted on. The hockey is a great asset right now. I didn't like the way it was put in place, but it's a heck of an asset for us right now to help bring people to town. And there's just other venues that are in the future. Our library's coming, it's getting built. I think that's a great venue for people to come to town, and people look at it, and of course, our hospitals are great. But infrastructure is a huge thing, and we're trying to work on that and get that better shape, and in the next couple of years, you're going to see quite a few different things coming with the Lincoln Avenue update and with the College Way project coming this fall. So it's just going to be a lot better place to drive, but our infrastructure itself is a huge, huge thing.
Thank you, Mr. Rachels. Mr. Kwame, your thoughts?
RC, could you repeat the question for me, please?
Certainly. "In the midst of economic changes, one common argument seems to be the need for recreational opportunities to spur growth or improving base infrastructure to sustain the city, to sustain what the city already has. Which approach, if either, do you believe best supports a healthy future for Fergus Falls?"
So if the question is, where are we going to put our money? Are we going to put it into a, you know, water park to draw people into town or improving our streets and other things to make it nice for people to live here when they're here? Clearly, there's advantages to both. Whether you're going to weight it heavily one way or the other, you would probably need to take care of the initial, take care of the assets that we have first, and I would lean toward that. We've got a lot of assets in this town that need to be taken care of. Some have been taken care of very well, some not so well. And as Scott had mentioned, we've been, we've seen how the city council has worked to increase the budget for our streets in this last budget round, and I think that's proper and a good thing to see coming. We have other things that we can pursue in a way of, things like recreation, for example. The Ferber Park has been getting some interest, a development as far as a bike, mountain bike trail area. There's other many number of trail possibilities that are on the list, whether it's the North Country Trail, the Glacial Edge Trail, and how all these water trails and others can combine for, to make this a terrific intersection of recreational opportunities, both indoor and outdoor, frankly. But as far as, if I had the money today and two options in front of me, I would lean toward taking care of our assets first and then do what we can on the recreational opportunities that we can also include. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Mr. Appert?
They're both priorities and objectives of ours. The, I think the statement is accurate with what Mr. Kwame has said, is take care of our assets first. We're looking to, and we have, it's in the budget, 20 percent increase in our street improvement fund for next year. Talked about the College Way stuff, the Lincoln Avenue project, and also the streets just south and east of Roosevelt Gymnasium. So those will be done here over the course of next year or so. That's going to greatly show. You can only do so many street projects, and our season here is not quite long enough to get as much done as a person would like either, and then, of course, there's obviously budget constraints to some degree, a big degree. We do have to look at providing some outdoor activities. We're doing a pretty good job of that already with Ferber Park, as was mentioned. We're kind of in the middle right now of looking at the feasibility of an outdoor aquatic park, so, which I think is a good idea to look at, and we'll find some ways to fund that. There'll be the usual ways of looking at that. We usually require them to raise money, do fundraising. There's bonding. We're going to be talking in November a little bit about ways of funding some of these additional projects that we're looking at overall, so bonding is one way to look at that. Raising money, fundraising is another way of doing that. Selling some existing assets, land here, and we're looking at doing that and have land for sale currently, so there are ways to fund some of these with not using all tax dollars. So I believe we're headed in the right direction, and there's some good things coming.
Thank you, sir. Although it may not often gain attention in the way discussion over the fate of the former regional treatment center tends to, many residents have expressed dissatisfaction over the condition of Lake Alice. Smaller projects, often through donations, have been completed to enhance the area, but what do you see for the future of the city's central lake? Mr. Rachels, we'll ask you first.
Um, Lake Alice is a, we've worked on that for five years, and there was different stages for us to do it, and we took the, it took longer to do it, but it was the cheapest, I shouldn't say the cheapest way, but the most economical way of doing it. It's a great asset to our city as people congregate there in the summer, walk around it. It's a huge deal. I think it's going to be in the next three to four years, it's going to, it's getting better every year, and I just believe that it's going to be a great thing. It's just that, how much money do you want to spend on it? If you do it the right, and we do it the way we're doing now, it's going to be a better thing for us in like three or four more years. But it's actually from four years ago when we started till today, it's just a whole new place to us, to me, I guess. I just drove around it yesterday, so I was amazed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Kwame?
Well, Lake Alice is a pretty significant piece of the city for me. It's right in my front yard, basically. I live on Lakeside Drive, and we look at, look out our window at Lake Alice, and so I've got a pretty strong connection to that neighborhood. Been there for over 20 years, and I really enjoy it. I enjoy being able to walk around the lake. We've got great neighbors and neighborhood there. I have to give a lot of credit to Burt Whitcomb and the efforts that he's had over the last couple of years to try and draw attention to the water quality issues of Lake Alice and how he pulled together the Lake Alice Neighborhood Community Group in that area. And St. James Church has hosted that group, and for many months, they were meeting every month. Now, over the summer, things kind of took off, it took a break, where people would be able to get together and talk about things that were very specific to that Lake Alice neighborhood. And as far as the neighborhood goes, there's still a real question about the water quality and about the weeds and things like that. There's a lot of questions about the roads, especially around the north side and the east and west sides as opposed to the south side. South side got fixed. People are asking, when are we going to do the rest of it? And that's where I'm hoping to, in my role as a city councilman, bring some vision to how we can address the problems that are still evident there, because even though there's been some things done, there is not, at this time, a plan on the table for how to deal with the remaining issues there, and I hope to have some input to that.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Mr. Appert, your thoughts?
Yeah, the last four years, we've been looking at that project off and on, more off than on, probably. That's all-site, street improvement was done here a couple of years ago. There are, there's a lot to be, left to be done on those streets there, both not only surface but subsurface issues there that need to be addressed and talked about and cost-wise for that. Yeah, the water quality isn't quite there yet either. It's come some ways. There were some efforts done here a few years ago to try to improve on some of that with that northeast or north side pump inlet there, so it has gotten a little bit better. It's a $7 to $10 million project. If you were going to do it the way some of the plans were set up or were introduced to us three years ago or four years ago now, we can't, quite frankly, afford that, so we're looking at some of these other ways of doing things. The streets, they'll get, they'll eventually, it'll be their turn type of thing. There's kind of a rotation going around. They'll get their turn, so I look forward to riding bike on little smoother surfaces here around the lake here, hopefully in not too distant future, so.
Yes, sir.
Just one thing with, there is a plan in place, and to fix the roads, it's just the economic part of it, how much we're going to spend on it. And like I talked about, the streets being fixed around just north of the school, we fixed some streets now, and then now, and next year in Ward One, we're going to move, go to, fix some streets there, and then next year will be Ward Four, and then next year will be Ward Three. So as those projects come around, we'll get into, because Lake Alice, everybody touches Lake Alice, all the wards do, so it's kind of a good thing for that. So that's coming in the future. It's just how much money we have.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. For a fourth question, "Lake Alice may serve as a well-utilized resource for those looking to enjoy a peaceful walk or a bike ride on a sunny afternoon, but the city arguably owes much of its existence and heritage to the Otter Tail River. The river has been central to many council discussions over the last few years, with major projects included in last year's downtown riverfront and master plan now being considered. What part does the river have in the future of Fergus Falls?" Mr. Kwame, we'll look to you first.
Well, clearly, the river is a central marker in town. I mean, if you look at a map, it's right in the middle, and it belongs that way. I think that history will show that that's where the energy from the town started and moved from there, and I think that's very appropriate. As far as the future, I think it's also very appropriate to see that as being a real impetus, a real fuel for the future of the city as well. The current plans in place to develop the amphitheater in the River Walk area and the trail system, including the Otter Tail River Trail through downtown, I think it's a good one, and I think it came at a high cost, and yet, now that we've got that master plan in place and something to refer to as the development of that area proceeds, I think that's, I think it's a well-developed plan that was put together with very good intentions and has some very good goals. I appreciate the River Walk as well, and I've kayaked on the river down by the dairy. I've been involved in the conversations and have attended the meetings of the Downtown Riverfront Council and been a part of the things going on there, as there's been conversations about how to approach, you know, what to do, and I really do believe that building up the strength of the river as a focal point of our town is an important thing to do and a good thing to do, and I support the work that's being done there. And I'm really looking forward to how we address the work along the dairy property in particular and how that can bring some economic development and some real dollars back to the city from the property being turned into something that generates money for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Mr. Appert?
The Downtown Riverfront Council pretty much states it right there, riverfront. It's an integral part of our city. We need to develop, and we're working on developing it. Downtown master plan, Riverfront master plan gave us those bullet points and those ideas. They're working on pulling together kind of the game plan for that. They've got surveys online to complete. Hopefully, it'll take some time to do that, to bring ideas and develop what we think will be down there as an amphitheater and the River Walk and some marketplace ideas. It's a, it's a great start. We have, we have some monies for that. We're getting more monies for that, and so as we look at the different ideas that the engineers come up with and the, more of the fruition comes on there, what it's supposed to look like, we'll get a little bit better idea what's down there. The other thing is with the dairy site acquisition, there again, as a municipality, we're the ones in the position to clean that up. It's a zit on our face, otherwise it's going to sit there for another so many years, not get cleaned up. We're in a position- going to sit there for another so many years, not get cleaned up. We're in a position to clean it up. We can go after grants. We can go after the monies to get that thing cleaned up and have that as a developer-ready site for somebody to come in. That'll, that development then will bring the tax base that we're looking for for economic development. It's an integral part of what we're trying to do. So, yes, the river plays a vital role in the city of Fergus.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rachels, your opinion?
Otter Tail River is probably the best-kept secret in our town from people from outside. They don't, you just, you drive over, you don't look at it. And I was, when we first did this master plan, that $180,000 was a lot of money and I wasn't in favor of it. I went along with it, you know, and after we got into this plan, finding out that if we didn't have this plan, we couldn't get any grants for it. We couldn't, we'd had people standing and want to donate money to this. And so, it was a good thing. The plan was, it was a cost of money, but it's going to save us money down the road. After seeing the concept of it, I was all in on it after seeing that. It's a, it's a great concept, what they've been, what they did with that. I think it's going to be a great asset to the community again. It's not going to be a high-maintenance asset. And that's a, maintenance is another big thing, we just talked about before, about what we've got to maintain it. So, I believe that that downtown riverfront is a good, good investment for the $180,000. We're going to get a lot of money coming into us through grants and different things over the next four to five years to get this thing done. Moving down the river, the dairy property, it's turned over to board authority now. I agree, we do have to get it cleaned up, but we need a plan. And there is no plan. We're just talking about, we talked about acquisition of the property. We, and we signed a contract. We have no financial plan, how we're going to do it. We just moved on what we're going to do after it's all done. But we need to get the plan in place of how much we're going to spend on it, how we're going to do it, who's going to pay for it. And that's our future on that end. But I believe we should, we should stay focused on the first two blocks of the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Serving as a city council member can be a time-consuming task. There are meetings to attend, documents to study, and proposals to ponder with large dollar amounts impacted by the decisions our city leaders make. Modern life, too, is frequently busy and hectic. How will you, if elected, prioritize your community and your ward above personal interests when your schedule is pushed to its limits? Mr. Appert, I'll ask you first.
Now, for, the last four years, yeah, the, we've had to learn how to, how to, how to, time management and prioritize. I got a business to run, I've got a family, empty nester as of a month ago, but still, grandkids, gotta love them. So, yeah, time management. You make time. There's a lot of times I get home at nine o'clock. There's a lot of times I'm up at 6:00 AM for 7:00 AM or earlier meetings. We, we all are aware of that and what it takes. There's been all kinds of hours, weekends, you know, evenings, phone calls from constituents. You just, you take them. You get back to people in a timely fashion and do it right away. Otherwise, yeah, life does move on. And if you don't do it right away, it kind of gets lost in the shuffle. There are many, many things, balls in the air, so to speak, trying to, trying to do this and have, have a business and have outside of all of that life as well. So, it takes a lot of time, takes, it's a big commitment. I talked about, you know, some of the meeting, the hours and, and time miles put on and, and text messages and that kind of phone calls. It's, it's a lot to do. It's really a lot to do. I've done it. So, I can do it again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rachels?
Being a city councilman is, is, there's a lot of responsibility when you're elected to that position. It's, it's your responsibility to do that job. Now, we have jobs. I own a business, which takes a lot of my time, but you also have some flexibility of moving. You can, you know, time in, but families first, then your business, and then the city council comes in place. But you can make it all work. I mean, I also am, exalted ruler of the Elks in Fergus Falls and I also do catering. So, I mean, my life is very hectic, but I've made it work for the last eight years. And I, we don't miss any meetings. We, we get our jobs done. We call our people back in the evenings. It's just about management of your time. And I enjoy doing it. I don't think it's, it's a hindrance to my life. I'm an empty nester like Darren. I've been a year and a half and it gets better, Darren, as you, as you get to enjoy the emptiness. But it's, it's just about time management and how you manage your time. And if you're efficient at managing your time, you can do a great job. And I think, being a city councilman, I love the job and I, I'd like to continue on doing it. We, we have a great, we're a great city and a great staff. A staff doesn't get mentioned enough and the staff is really good for us. And it makes our job a little easier when the staff is prepared and as good as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rachels. Mr. Kwame?
Well, it's a cliche, I guess, but if you want something done, ask a busy person. Most people have heard that or maybe even said that. And, excuse me, and I'm a busy person, but I get things done. I know how to work hard. I've been in a number of jobs that have required well beyond a typical work week, whether it was driving a beat truck or from 2:00 AM till 2:00 PM years ago, several times, or whether it was working in the concession business where we would sometimes start at 7:00 in the morning and go till 2:00 AM. I mean, long days are nothing foreign, nothing surprising to me. And you do what needs to be done to get the job done. I know how to do that. As far as how to be efficient, you know, you've learned over time what you have to prioritize. And I've learned how to do that, too. And you get the important things done. You start on the most important things first. And that's the process that I use to decide how I'm going to attack my day, whether it's a list of who I'm going to see in my sales work for the day, or if it's a list of things that I need to read, things that I need to review, things that I need to learn, you know, as I'm, as I'm going forward. So, I don't think that's a terribly complicated question, but it's a matter of just putting your, putting your mind to the work, putting your shoulder to the grindstone and getting the job done.
Thank you, sir. Too often, the complaint heard from residents is that they're simply not aware of a city plan or project. They may read the newspaper, listen to the radio, and catch every public meeting on Peg Access Television, but some municipal actions still come as a surprise, often sparking controversy over perceived lack of transparency. What is the important, in your, importance, in your opinion, of transparency in local government? And how will you play a part in keeping the public and the media informed, if elected? Mr. Rachels, we'll ask you first.
Transparency is a huge thing. The laws require us to be transparent and we do everything in the open as much as we can. And communicating back to the public is the toughest thing. I hear it all the time. It's, well, you must have your secret meetings. And I was like, I don't have, we can't have secret meetings. We don't have secret meetings. But we communicate through the community as a whole and then the city council meeting. There's a planning commission has meetings. And so, those three entities right there alone, try to keep track of all them myself is enough. And much less somebody that's a citizen that, that doesn't know how to do the, look and look for the stuff on the computer or wherever. So, I just believe our transparency in us, we continue on, we're great. We haven't had any closed meetings and for I don't know how long. And until we close the meetings, either it's something to do with an employee or something to do with a sale of a piece of property and all that. Last one, I think it was a dairy property. We moved on of that. And so, I, I don't know how to make it any better than what we do. Lynn on our staff, she communicates with everything with, we're on Facebook, we're on the internet with our website and, of course, the TVs. I just, we do the best, most we can do to get it out to the public as much as we can. So, it's, it's hard to say, but we, transparency is a huge, huge thing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kwame?
Well, communication was my major in college. My degree was in communication. And some days, I'm better at it than others. But how that plays into the idea of being transparent or not, frankly, I think for the people in Fergus Falls or anywhere that were wondering what, you know, what's going on in Fergus Falls, the information is, for the most part, out there. If you want to know what's going on and if you're paying attention, you can find out what's going on. You can read the minutes of the meetings. They're published. You can watch the videos on TV. You can read the newspaper. And you can call any of these guys, any of us, at any time and talk to us about it. And so, I don't know that the criticism for being transparent is really valid. There would be certain issues that doesn't seem like there's quite enough information out there. You know, for example, we talked earlier about Lake Alice. And my neighbors are saying, well, when are they going to do the rest of this? When, when's it going to happen? Well, you might think, well, they're just not telling us. They're not being transparent. Well, in fact, there wasn't anything to tell. And the news came and it went and that person wasn't paying attention. I'm not trying to cause a fuss with my neighbors here. But I think that the information is generally there if people are interested and wanting to find it. One suggestion, though, I would make, and that is, I think it's a very good thing that the mayor is on the radio every couple of weeks before, on the days of the council meetings. And then the city administrator, Andrew, also does a show on the radio. And I think it wouldn't hurt for the radio to have a council member on from time to time. Maybe it would be a regularly scheduled thing. Maybe it would be something that as needed. But I'd be willing to participate in that. And I found, I have found, in my experience, the radio to be a very effective way to communicate. And I think we could increase the level of communication and information getting out to the people of Fergus Falls if we were to use the radio a little bit more and not necessarily depend only on the paper to carry the story for us.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Leighton Broadcasting has not sponsored this event, but I think they appreciate the comments. Mr. Appert?
No offense, Arce. Yeah, that was on my platform four years ago was transparency. I, I think we've gotten better. You know, Scott mentioned the, the website. All the minutes for both council and planning commission are on the website. Facebook, Lynn's doing a great job with that in the last couple of years or so. And we have open meetings for projects for these master plans. There was three or four meetings ahead of anything getting, getting to the point of where it is today in the council chambers, open house, public invited. They were downtown in, in August, the end of August. They had a booth showing the different conceptual drawings of, of what they were thinking about with the, with the riverfront area. So, we're trying to get them, get them out as best we can. Is there room for improvement? Of course, there is. There always is. And like Scott had mentioned, it's one of the things I hear, too. So, I didn't hear about that. I didn't hear about that. I, I don't know what more they could do, you know, unless they wanted to start coming to every meeting. And that gets a little cumbersome at times. So, I think there has been a great improvement. I think there's a little bit more work that can be done. But the, it's out there. It's out there. No secret meetings, none of, none of that stuff going on. We're open. Yeah, call us if you don't know what's going on, want to know what's going on. All you got to do is call or stop by my office or, or, you know, go to, go to City Hall and ask somebody. So, we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can.
Thank you, sir. While we've made it through the first phase of our debate and the largest phase of our debate, I might recommend a deep breath as we move into the next. One of the most difficult challenges for anyone in public office is the need to think quickly during trying situations. Our final question, in our final questions, I will address each candidate individually, asking one question each that will look at your potential weak points of your campaign and ask you to defend your platform. We'll begin our rotation from the, the beginning. So, we'll start with Mr. Appert. Mr. Appert, in your time serving on the city council, you've gained the reputation with some as being a contemplative but often selective speaker in public meetings. There may be value in holding your thoughts before sharing your stance. But do you believe voters will know your position on important issues when they head to the polls in November? And if so, how so?
Well, I'll get the, I'll be walking the word here shortly. There's no secret on, on my platform. It's going to be widely known. I, yeah, I don't, I'm a, I'm a thinker. I, I'm a processor. I don't, I'm not an orator. There's some on the council that do a very good job at, at that. That isn't my forte. My, my platform will be out there. The, the, the speaking of, you know, these type of things to find out what, you know, what we're planning on doing, or what our platform is. I mean, the word is going to get out there. So, I don't see that as, as something that won't happen. So, with, with, with that, I, I'm very open, pretty easy to approach. You're just not going to hear me be out in front with what's going on all the time. I have, I have a kind of a keep it near the chest mentality. And I'm a pretty good listener. I'm, I'm a relationship, in the relationship business. So, that's some of the, some of the things that, you know, you confidentiality in my business. I'm pretty, I take things pretty serious when it comes to trying to keep, keep things where you don't want to get stepping on something that ought not to be stepped on until you find out all the facts. And then you come with your ideas about how to process or how to, how to fix that or how to overcome that particular issue. So...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rachels, a portion of your last term in office has involved the annexation of Woodland Heights into the city limits. That action was met with some resistance, putting you potentially in a difficult position as one of two council members who would ultimately represent those new Fergus Falls citizens at City Hall. How do you intend to ensure the needs and values of Woodland Heights, as well as the greater population of Ward Two, are fairly addressed if reelected?
The annexation of Woodland Heights was a very trying part of my term. Made a few mistakes in, in that and going through it. But communication with the people in Woodland Heights is probably going to be the biggest key, helping them understand things that they can do and can't do, the benefits of the city, which I think some of them are finding out that it, we have a, we have a, you know, a better, what I hear, better garbage pickup and better winter plowing. And just to get them to understand that we want them to be part of our city and we want them to enjoy our, our benefits of our city. And the, communication, I think, is the biggest thing, is just to communicate with them and keep that open with them and understand that, that I'm not perfect and the city's not perfect. But we're going to do our best job we can for them and be there when they need them.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kwame, many who follow the issues of local government may have come to know yourself through your presentations on behalf of a certain historical preservation advocacy group. If elected to office, will you be able to maintain an open mind to the desires of your ward? And what actions will you take to welcome diverse perspectives?
To welcome diverse perspectives. There's a mouthful for you. I think that it's accurate to say I've probably become known for being part of a, how did you describe it? A local advocacy group, also known as the Friends of the Kirk Bride. And I think that's a fair assessment. The whole issue of what to do with the Regional Treatment Center is basically what drew me into paying attention to the city council about five years ago or so, as I was hearing different things and wondering what was going to happen and wanted to know more about it. So, I would go to meetings and listen and hear things that motivated me to get involved. There were things that, about the process of how that was being handled that didn't, didn't sit well with me. And I thought, well, I guess if I'm going to watch it or get involved, I better get involved. And the people that get involved have got something to say about it. The people that watch it, they're, you know, they've kind of give up their opportunity to complain because if you're just going to watch, you're not in the game. And so, I decided to jump in the game at that point. How would I welcome diversity and how would I deal with that? I'm, well, I believe I'm open-minded enough to listen to the various inputs from everybody on the given issue and then be able to weigh those inputs and make a good decision on it. I don't think that we're at the end of the story when it comes to the RTC or any of the other issues in town. There's going to be decisions to be made there, as well as on the riverfront or for the pool or whatever it might be. And I'd be more than happy to hear from anybody on what their opinion is and how they'd like me to proceed. And I'll, I'll take all the input and make the best decision I can with what I'm, what I'm told.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank you candidates for your patience and your good natures as we've tackled some trying questions this evening. At this point, I'm going to correct my earlier statement. We will allow each candidate two minutes to provide a closing statement. And we'll begin with Mr. Rachels.
In closing, I guess I'd just like to ask Ward Two residents to vote for me to let me continue on with the work I've been doing with the city. Our caution, compliments since we start, since I started this was to start, or we have a new police station. We have a, a nice library being built now, which was voted on by the people of the city. We are working on our streets. We're working on economic development with, through other groups, various groups, not the council themselves. The transparency, to keep that transparency up, to keep the Lake Alice thing, we need to get that lake cleaned up, but the most economical way of doing it and not spending a bunch of money on it. Keeping the roads, like I said, the roads going good. But the biggest thing I want to help do in this town is to keep the negativity. We, when you, when you, when you talk to different people, it's all the negativity that we hear, things are going to close because we've had three things close on us in the last five years. are going to close, because we've had three things close on us in the last five years, or three years, I guess it's been, maybe five years. But it's just one of them things that negative, when we talk negative, things are going to be negative. We need to talk positive, because we have a great town. Fergus Falls is a great city. And whenever I go around the country or go on vacation, it's always great to come home to Fergus Falls. I love this community. I'm going to live here for the rest of my life. I just, I think I just want to give back, and that's my huge thing. I have a great business, and it's because of the people of Fergus Falls my business is good. And so, I just want to give back to my community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kwame, your closing remarks.
Thank you. And thank you again, RC, and to the paper, Daily Journal, for hosting this event. I think it's a really important thing to have these kinds of opportunities for people to hear from candidates and to be able to see them, meet them, and find out a little bit about what they think. And for those who are wondering, you know, where I might be going, what my platform might be, you referenced that, RC, as, you know, what's your platform? And for me, the focus is going to be on economic development. And I happen to live in Ward Two, and the biggest thing going in Ward Two regarding economic development, frankly, is the Hoot Lake Power Plant. And so, among the things that will be on my list of things to pay attention to and to work on, is finding a good resolution for what's going to happen with that area to bring some revenue to the city, because we're going to be faced with a real issue there in a very short time. Beyond that, there's other typical things. I mean, things that, maybe not so typical isn't the right word, but just things that are kind of, become standard fare, part of the conversation, whether it's the RTC, whether it's Lake Alice, the Downtown Riverfront. There's a lot of things to deal with, a lot of questions. There's even some other things that I've had people bring to my attention. You know, what's the city going to do about trying to provide daycare? What's the city going to do about trying to open up possibilities for retail, whether it's the West Gateway Area or downtown? There's a lot to deal with. And yet, I'm very anxious, frankly, to get in the game and have something to say and have a chance to represent the people of Ward Two and the people of Fergus Falls in those conversations and in those decisions. Again, thank you for paying attention and being a part of the audience today, and I look forward to continuing this conversation in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Appert, your final remarks.
Did you say two minutes or three minutes? In your notes here, it says three minutes.
It does, as a matter of fact, and that statement is now invalid. As a matter of time, we'll do two minutes.
So, I got three minutes worth of notes. I'll try to condense.
Thank you, sir.
As I've talked about, some of the experiences being on city council, the objectives and work that will get done with all of our help, if reelected, as I cannot do it alone. I'm reminded of the lessons from geese. We see them all around our city, right? As each bird flaps its wing, it creates an uplift behind it. There is a 71% more flying range in a V formation than flying alone. The lesson, people who share a common direction and sense of common purpose can get there quicker. Whenever a goose flies out of formation, it quickly feels a drag and tries to get back into position. The lesson, it's harder to do something alone than together. When the lead goose gets tired, it rotates back into the formation and another goose flies at the head. The lesson there, shared leadership and interdependence gives us each a chance to lead, as well as opportunities to rest. The geese in formation honk from behind to encourage those up front to keep up their speed. The lesson there, we need to make sure our honking is encouraging and not discouraging. When a goose gets sick or wounded and falls, two geese fall out and stay with it until it revives or it dies. They then catch up or join another flock. The lesson here, stand with your colleagues and your city in difficult times, as well as in good. We have accomplished many things in the last four years, but we have a ways to go. As your council representative, I plan to continue working towards the three areas that were defined as priorities and objectives in my opening statement. Number one, infrastructure on streets. Number two, community development. And most importantly, economic development. I want to thank all for the opportunity to be part of this council debate, and I appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I mentioned that serving in elected office is a matter of flexibility, and you've all demonstrated your adaptability in the last couple of minutes here. Ladies and gentlemen, and to those watching at home, that brings us to the conclusion of the first portion of tonight's debate. Before we adjourn for a 10-minute intermission, I want to take one final opportunity to thank our sponsors, the Fergus Falls Daily Journal and Peg Access Television, for making this event possible. I also want to thank our candidates for taking the time to be here today. And finally, a special thank you to everyone here in attendance and at home for being involved in local government and the future of Fergus Falls. A quick reminder that elections will be held on Tuesday, November 6th. That date is only a little more than a month away. And although who you vote for can have a lasting impact, please remember that it is the ability to vote in and of itself that so many great men and women have given their lives to protect. Thank you all again. We will temporarily adjourn for 10 minutes before beginning our Wards Three and Four debate at approximately 6:05 PM. Please take the opportunity to stretch and greet your neighbors and candidates while we prepare for our final debate this evening. Thank you all.